This conference will now be recorded.
I'm going to ask now if Mr. Calhoun can hear me, if he would lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. We had some technical difficulties last week, but we want to give him another opportunity. So, Mr. Calhoun, would you please lead us at this time in our Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, sir. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Did you hear me?
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun. Yes, sir. Thank you. If you are not speaking, please mute your device. Mr. Brown, did you have any success with Mr. Holmes?
Yes, sir. I did get him, get hold of him. He was dialing in momentarily. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Fellow board members, we have before us the agenda for our May 21st Virtual Board Meeting. And I know that we've had an opportunity to look at the different items on the agenda. Are there any questions on any particular item that is before us tonight? If there be no questions on the agenda, we do have more than enough for a forum. So, I'm going to ask Ms. Chapman if she would give us a roll call vote on the adoption of the agenda for our meeting on tonight.
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
And Mr. Holmes, if you are available, can we get your roll call vote? I don't see him on yet, Mr. Elliott.
Okay. Motion is carried. Thank you. We will include him as we go forward. Motion is carried by majority of the board. Fellow board members, we have before us consent items. We have one consent item, and that is our minutes for our April 23rd meeting and our April 30th meeting. Are there any questions on the consent items? If there are no questions on a consent item, we entertain a motion to approve these items at this time.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, and no questions. All in favor, let it be known during the roll call vote. Ms. Chapman?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
And Mr. Holmes, if you're available.
Good night. With us, motion, motion is carried by a majority. Board members, on tonight, we have a budget discussion. Is Ms. Rollins available to give us any additional information on the budget before we move forward with it? Ms. Rollins?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. How are you, Mr. Chairman? Members of the board?
Doing great. Goodness.
Yes. No, I do not have any additional information this evening, Mr. Chair, and those who are assembled on the virtual meeting. Again, the action tonight is we're asking the board to take action on the fiscal year 2021 proposed consolidated budget and the CIP. You do have resolutions that were included in your agenda material tonight, and I will leave it up to you all to go through the resolutions unless you all have any questions for me. But nothing has changed in terms of the budget presentation that was done at the previous meeting where we had the public hearing versus what are you, what is being asked to approve this evening?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rollins. Fellow board members, we do have before us two resolutions for tonight. The first being Resolution 2020-10, which is the adoption of the tax rate. And at this time, are there any questions from board members on the adoption of the tax rate? Excuse, that was you, Mr. Holmes?
I was just saying, no questions.
There be no question from board members, we will enter, the chair will entertain a motion on the Resolution 2020-10.
Mr. Chairman?
So moved, Mr. Chair, on the resolution.
To accept the resolution, you have a motion to accept the resolution. Do we have a second?
Mike Drew, so moved.
It has been properly moved and second. At this time, we ask Ms. Chapman to give us a roll call vote on the acceptance and the adoption of Resolution 2020-10.
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Resolution 2020-10 has been adopted. Also, board members before us, we have Resolution 2020-11, which is the budget for the year 2021. If there are no questions on this resolution, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-11.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, for the adoption of 2020-21.
Have motion on four. Do we have a second?
Welcome, Mr. Chair.
It has been properly moved and second. All in favor, let it be known by a roll call vote. Ms. Chapman?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Other, other item on required action, does not require action, but is therefore our knowledge it is to propose budget and CIP packet for 2021. Thank you, board members, for your attention to these required actions. At this time, we will have a report from Mr. Phelps from Emergency Services.
Can you hear me now?
I see, I see he's muted. Yes, sir.
Can you hear, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Sorry about that. All right. Good evening, Chairman of the Board, board members, Ms. Rollins and citizens of Suri County. What I wanted to do is discuss a little bit about the, the testing that we have coming up next week on the 28th of May. We put out some press release this past week on the Facebook and website, as well as, I think it's in the Sussex Suri Dispatch. And then next week, it should be in the Smithfield Times and hopefully again in the Sussex Suri Dispatch. We, Emergency Management has partnered with the Virginia Department of Health, the Crater Health District, and the Virginia, Virginia Army National Guard to offer COVID-19 testing. They're asking that everyone pre-register. The earliest you can pre-register is starting on the 24th of May. They're, they're not taking registrations for our area until the 24th of May. So, they want a four day, four days out. With that pre-registration, there is a pre-screening process that they'll, they'll take you through. And then the, the testing is only for three hours. It'll start at 9:00 a.m. and end at noon. We have 100 tests available. They are recommending that anybody that feels they need to be tested, pre-register. If for some reason somebody doesn't, doesn't have the chance to pre-register, they do have the ability to show up, and then they have to register on-site. But they'll, they, it's determined on by how many tests are, were already pre-registered, allocated through for the pre-registered. So, we would like to see, you know, that, we're glad we have the opportunity to offer this to our citizens. I want everybody to know that we did increase in numbers. We are up to eight positive cases. We just found this out. It's about 6:30 this evening. So, we're up to eight positive cases in Suri County, and unfortunately, we, we had the one death. I'd like to instill in everybody to, please don't get complacent. A lot of areas are, are growing rapidly. So, you know, please do everything you can to do your part to prevent the, the spread of the virus. We're not out of the woods yet, and, and nobody knows when we will be. But if anybody has any questions, they can feel free to contact us here at the office. And the, we're using multiple means to get this information out there as far as the testing goes, so that everybody has the opportunity. If you have any questions, just feel free to ask me or, or give me a call.
Well, this is Kenneth Holmes. I appreciate your, I appreciate your direct response to the whole virus situation, and we, we don't need any gaps to be left open, and you seem to be filling those gaps in. And if any other board member sees anything different, obviously, they would let, let us know. But I think you're doing a good job in keeping things tight. We have to be tight with this situation, and we can't get relaxed. So, I, I think that I'm making some sense when I say that it's good that you're holding things tight, and that we will continue to expect that type of reaction from you.
I appreciate it, sir. We're, we're a good team. We've got a, this is a, we're an all-in effort. So, everybody's working hard to make sure that we're doing the right things and, and giving us good input from all the staff members and department heads to make sure we're heading in the right direction. So, so we appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, this is Mike Drew. Can I ask a question?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Phelps, and thanks to also, I'll mirror what Mr. Holmes said, and again, thanks for your efforts in these difficult times, and to all the staff, and our county administrators as well. Mr. Phelps, I know we have 100 tests coming in, and I'm assuming this is, should be mainly for people who are high-risk or in vulnerable situations. As the state, because I know they're going around to localities doing this, are you getting, you know, you hear nothing in the news about ramping up testing in Virginia. Are you getting any information from Virginia Department of Health when they might be more common for citizens, a wider range of citizens, to have testing done?
Yes, sir. We, in fact, we started discussions on that this past week. They're starting to formulate the phases, just like the, just like the governor's trying to phase everything in. The Virginia Department of Health and Crater Health District are beginning to create phases on, on how they're going to offer more testing and different types of testing. This, this drive of testing works out well because they're able to see a massive number of people in a short period of time. And there's several different avenues that they're looking at, and really not at liberty to, I don't want to talk about them yet because they haven't dialed in on everything yet. I think if, if, it would leave too many questions, but that the Virginia Department of Health and Crater Health District are looking at, there's roughly four phases that they're, they're planning on coming all the way through the fall. And those should, those should be coming out pretty soon.
Do you, can you give us a time period when they might be another step up in testing? And if you can't, don't, that's okay.
Yeah. At, at this point, sir, I can't give you a time on that. Because they haven't, they haven't given us that. They just said between now and the fall, they're, they're trying to do a four-phase where there is a different type of testing each time. And, and as we go, some of the testing are, you know, they're, they're quicker response, quicker results and things like that. And I think that's one of the things that they're leaning towards trying to be able to do is offer a quicker result test. I don't know if you, Sussex County has experienced, if, if anybody's been keeping up on the, the count for Sussex County. They, they offer what is called a point prevalent testing, and what that is, is they go into an area, mostly on, you know, nursing homes or jails or prison systems or things like that, and where they know they have a virus and there's a large congregation of people, and they're able to get quicker results. And that's why Sussex County's numbers jumped last week from 54 to 140 today, because they did that point prevalent testing. But most of that was, the numbers look skewed. Everybody goes, oh, my gosh, we've got a huge outbreak in Sussex County. But what it is, is most of it's in the prisons, in the prison system over there. But those, the point prevalent testing is something that does give a quicker result, but they aren't at the point where they can do that at every testing site. So, but those are some of the things they are working towards.
Are there any other questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Drury. Are there any other questions or comments from Mr. Phelps? If not, I want to thank Mr. Phelps as well for keeping a handle on things as they are carried. And we appreciate your efforts that you're doing to keep Suri as safe as possible during these trying times. So, thank you very much, sir, for the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
On the agenda, now it is for public comments, and once again, we want to let all of our citizens know that we, well, thank you for your comments that have been coming in. We have received them, and hopefully, you're getting verification that your comments have been received. And we do get those shortly thereafter the meeting, and we do give our attention to your comments and concerns from the citizens of Suri County. Unfortunately, we are in this mode now, and this is the way that we will be receiving public comments. Are there any comments from the board at this time? Any board members on any items? If not, I would like to thank our staff at this time for being able to get the budget together. I know in these are different, different times than we've seen before, and I know that it has increased the hardship on getting it done. But we want to thank you, our county administrator, our finance team, for working diligently to put us in a position where we were able to approve a budget on tonight. So, thank you for your efforts to continue to move Suri County forward. Are there any other comments from board members at this time? If there be no other comments, we will have our county administrators' report. Ms. Rollins?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. And again, I also just want to thank again the team for all of their hard-working input in the budget process. And thank you again, the board of supervisors, for your diligence, your feedback, as well as from the citizens, and for your action on this evening to, as I may frankly say, to get the budget behind us. Thank you so much. Mr. Phelps does always give a very informative report, so we certainly appreciate that. And I guess I would end my report this evening with talking about a few positive things that are going on in Suri County community. I don't know whether or not you had the opportunity to look at today's Sussex Suri Dispatch, but I did. And I saw the, the article about the school system, and of course, we know that our public school system is a big piece of the fabric that makes up our community. And I just wanted to say kudos to the article where, if you looked at it and actually go online, you're able to see the video that shows teachers virtually, I miss you messages to the students. So, I just thought that was a way that the teachers are trying to connect with the students, and that is important for us to remain social and, and connected during this time of crisis. So, I just thought that was kudos to our school system, and Dr. Sam shared that yesterday on a call. That is that unity in the community that we do like to see. Also, not taking anything away from the school division, and I'm not sure, Mr. Elliott, whether or not you wanted to chime in on this as well. But the Suri County Public School System, of course, will have a graduation on June 13th. And of course, the graduation is going to be modified and social distancing due to the COVID-19 situation. With the blessing of the school system and some conversations among the parents and some students, and of course, Mr. Elliott, we were asked as a county to, to also coordinate a social distancing activity whereby the community can actually participate in graduation. The one that the school division is, is having is, is very exciting, but it will be limited, of course, to just the students and the parents. So, the one that they were asked for the county to do is just a, a very simple modified, short parade whereby the community will have an opportunity just to, to wave and say their congratulations to the students. I just wanted to mention that. On Tuesday, that was election day, town election, and I received a report from our registrar, Ms. White. And normally, may elections do have a low turnout, and of course, it was a rainy day, so that probably did not help as well. But I do want to report that she indicated that 23% of the registered voters turned out in the town of Claremont, 21% in the town of Enduren, and 28% in the town of Suri. That includes absentee and in-person voting. More importantly, it was a safe election process on Tuesday. She indicated that everything went very well. She was excited to see the staff and the public coming in wearing their face masks. And of course, she was very pleased about the process. She also wanted to share that there was a, we had a power outage during that time. If you all recall, we had a tree down in the town of Suri. But no worries, the, the register office was well-equipped with what to do with the disruption, and all went well. So, just want to report that. And I do know we have a new mayor in the town of Suri with Mr. Benny Savage, replacing Mayor Gorton, who did not run this year. I also want to indicate that our 2020 census update, now where we resume normal operations at some point, staff, of course, will be presenting this report. But hopefully, you all do not mind a little friendly competition among your districts. Just wanted to give you an update that was reported by Ms. Goldson this morning. We, we want to say that obviously, our census is lagging behind. The pandemic with social distancing, of course, has slowed down the canvassing of census coworkers, and I'm sure it's across the state. But efforts are underway to ramp up the campaign. Today, as a matter of fact, we had the state census representative, that's Assistant Suri. She was out with staff, and they were able to go out to the, the food bank distribution pickup site this morning to see whether or not they had any residents they could find who needed to register for the census. It was about 100 citizens out there, and all that they talked to was a very small number who had not completed the form. But as we always say, reach one, teach one. So, if they was able to reach five, there was five additional folks that they was able to make sure they were going to register for the 2021, 2020 census update. In terms of response rate right now, the statewide Virginia response rate is about 64%, so we are trailing behind. Suri's response rate is 45 and a half percent. Claremont's response rate is 43%. Enduren's response rate is 44%. And I do not know how that fares against other jurisdictions, but at the same time, we do know that because of COVID-19, that a lot of folks' numbers are probably trailing behind. But again, they are definitely picking up the pace. I'm not on the webcam this evening, but behind me, as a matter of fact, I have a huge Census 2020 banner behind me. And I want to say that businesses, if you are on the call this evening, you want to get ready because they are actually going to be stopping by and visiting some of the businesses and bringing by some of the census posters and banners to remind those who are coming in to definitely register for the 2020 census. I want to mention that, and this is related to broadband. And anytime we talk about broadband in Suri County, we all should just give a, a shout because it is coming to Suri County. We do know that. Everybody just want to know when, right? But it's coming. We have been asked as staff, myself and along with the Economic Development Director, to provide a testimony to the State Corporation Commission in the support of Dominion Energy's application to the SCC for its pilot broadband project. We have been asked to speak to certain things as the economic development outcomes of having high-speed, high-speed reliable broadband in the county. And of course, our benefit of our partnership with Prince George Electric Co-op as a service provider. If you recall, back in February, Prince George Electric Co-op and Dominion Energy signed a partnership agreement whereby thousands of residents in rural Suri County could receive, would receive, have, receive access to high-speed internet. This is something, again, that we are very excited about. And to continue on with that excitement, we want to share with everybody on the call this evening that Prince George Electric Co-op has announced that they are ready to establish a member contact center in Suri County. They will, all we will have to do is donate the space at one of our facilities that is centrally located in the county whereby RuBAN Fiber is already present or will be present to expedite the process. And they will be responsible for purchasing all the equipment and outfitting the facility to showcase and educate Suri County residents on how broadband can be used in our everyday lives. And we think about it, board members and residents on the call, the challenge of COVID-19 in terms of the need for our employees to telework, as far as our school division, in terms of the students needing access to homework. If you think about broadband in terms of the telemedicine, and you don't have to travel outside the county for a simple doctor's appointment where you can get it online, especially for a elderly growing population like Suri County. It is an effective communication tool for our public safety, first responsible, first responders. Think about the digital learning aspect of it, the home entertainment for our children, the, the fact that it increases our property values and so much more. So, these are the things that we put in our testimonies, where we are talking to folks about the benefits of broadband in Suri County. Prince George County, of course, is making it available, using grant dollars, tax dollars. And all we have to do as a county is sign up for the service and to see it, to believe it. And I do know that we have some folks on this call today who do have their service and certainly can provide some additional testimony as the quality of life that it brings to, to your home where you do have high-speed reliable broadband. Last week, as you all know, the governor of Virginia had released some of his restrictions, and our businesses began to open. I had a conversation with just one or two, and, and speaking with the winery, they were very excited to be back open. They were pleased. And of course, looking forward to the weather breaking without the rain, so they continued to have some activities outside. And of course, they're looking forward to getting back in operation. If you had social media and saw some of the posts at the Suri seafood restaurant, you can see that they was able to practice all the social distancing that was necessary to put tables and umbrellas and things outside, and it was a beautiful sunny weekend. So, they certainly were excited about being back in operations as well. One of the things that we get asked when we were on the calls is to whether or not our businesses are practicing social distancing and are following the rules that have been set, the guidelines and rules that have been set by governor. And that is one of the things that we want to continue to encourage all businesses to make sure that they do provide a safe environment for all those who are patriarchy, and also to help prevent the spread of the COVID virus. And we do appreciate the cooperation for all of our businesses. I do not know whether or not you all knew it, but I want to give kudos to just these operational changes in terms of one thing that, a lot of things happened. But I had an opportunity to purchase something from the county's Mobile Farmers But I had an opportunity to purchase something from the county's mobile farmer's market, right? A mobile farmer's market whereby the Suri Cooperative Extension had an online order form and they were able to deliver fresh produce and other items that, you know, the customers paid online. So there was no exchange of any cash or anything. And I thought there was kudos to them for doing that. There were several vendors in the county that participated, including Red Barn, Berkshires, Slade Farms, Copper Family Farms, Crystal Sweet Treat and Catering, Colonial Trail Seafood participated. And I'm sure I'm missing some others. But I just want to give kudos to them because I'm going to have to just say this real quick. Homegrown lettuce in Suri County tastes absolutely wonderful in my salad in my BLT. So I thought there was kudos to them. I appreciated that. And I think that's all I want to say. Again, it is, one more thing, it is Emergency Services Week. It concludes on the 23rd as the resolution was approved. So if you see your emergency service workers, make sure that you thank them for all that they do. On Tuesday, we as a team of employees and are trying to do our phased-in approach to coming back from telework and entering the workplace. We have a call planned on tomorrow whereby we will be discussing those reentry plans. It's not as simple as you think it is. Making sure that when employees do come back, that emergency management and administration and everybody has that shared responsibility to make sure that all that we are doing, employees coming back will certainly be coming back to a safe facility and we doing all the things to help make the environment safe. And once we get those plans solidified, we can make sure that we do post those online. And I will definitely share those in details with the board of supervisors and our public. Right now, we are still underneath the governor's safer-at-home order, which ends on June 10th. The COVID-19 situation is very fluid. We've been, again, been following that guidance. No plans right now as far as public reentry back to the building, back to the facilities. Pretty much, everyone is kind of waiting on that order. But we are anticipating at some point, we're going to be going into the second phase whereby the public would be permitted to enter our facilities and will be expected to practice the same measures that employees are expected to do when we start coming back over the next couple of weeks. So I just, I believe that's all I have this evening, Mr. Chairman, and thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins, for your report. Fellow board members, you have documents on your agenda for informational purposes. And we just look forward to continue moving Suri County in a positive direction during these adverse times. Once again, thank everybody. And I just ask everybody to make sure you do everything you possibly can do to stay safe. Because as many have said in our meeting tonight, the virus is still here. Don't let down your guard. When you let down your guard, that's when you get caught. So please, please, please do everything you can to remain safe, keep Suri County safe. There be no other comments or remarks from the board members at this time. We do entertain a motion for adjournment until our June 4th meeting. We get two weeks off, hey, man? We've been having meetings every week, but we get a week in between. So it's June 4th at 7:00. Mr. Chair. We have a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, this is Tim Callen.
Yes, Mr. Callen.
I just have a question for Ms. Rollins. You mentioned the graduation parade. Do you have a place and time for that parade? I don't think I caught that.
Yes, yes, sir. The date is June 13th. They are the same date that they're doing it at the schools. No specific time right now because it's going to happen after the graduation ceremony at the school. Dr. Sims indicated that she felt that they wanted the school would last several hours. And, you know, it would be an opportunity, I guess, for the students to, you know, to decorate their vehicles and do whatever they need to do to make it an extra exciting event. No time right now, but we will make sure that we get that information out. And it may not necessarily be a time based on, you know, the graduation ending at the school and then the students just preparing. The efforts are being coordinated in the county by our sheriff and our director of Parks and Recreation. Do you want to add that?
Okay. And one other question, if I may. Do we have any updates or statuses regarding the application for the small business grants that we're offering?
The update I can give you and give the board and others is that the application have been sent to the Economic Development Authority, who will be administering the grant program. They will need to set up, from what I understand, a virtual meeting so they can discuss it. And, but that's where we are now. We have done at our end all the necessary things to get that to them. And we are definitely want to market that program when it becomes available. County staff would be more than happy to assist the EDA in getting that information posted on social media, posted on our website, and getting it out to, as we said before, the listing of businesses that we do have. And of course, by word of mouth. But the application process, the application itself has been sent to the EDA for them to take the necessary steps to begin the process.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. I just want to try to keep an update for those of us on the telephone and the county as well. Thank you.
Absolutely. Appreciate it.
If there be no other comments or remarks from board members, we entertain a motion now for adjournment until June 4th at 7:00.
Don't move.
Don't move. Motion is second.
Second.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Probably move a second, roll call vote. Yes, probably move a second, roll call vote, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Jury.
Yes.
Ms. Little.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Callen.
Yes.
Motion is carried. God bless you guys. See you on June 4th at 7:00.
God bless you too.
June 4th, 7:00. Good meeting. Good meeting, really.